Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Board of Selectmen meeting. Ms. Wertz is having some difficulty connecting with our meeting. Mr. Slaven, could you do a roll call, please?
Okay. She's back?
Yeah, you're there. Ms. Wertz, can you hear me?
I can. Now, can you hear me?
Yes. Could you do the roll call, please, ma'am?
All right. We have at tonight's meeting, we have Jared Chadwick, Tricia Wertz, Judith Whiteside, Alan Slaven, Richard Bowen, Steve Ruiz, and Derek Sullivan. Not here is Ron Bessie.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance, Jared, how about you?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Thank you. Announcements. Mr. Chadwick, do you have any announcements, sir?
I have none.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, do you have any announcements?
Just one. It has to do with more the. I'm not sure how to put it properly, but, you know, we've been having a long process doing Route six and twenty-eight. There's been a lot of difficulty getting the project off the ground. It's been delayed over ten years. The cost of the project went from fifteen million for the full project to less than half the project at almost twenty-one million right now. And there's been a lot of complaints in certain businesses and stuff over the whole timeframe. I was involved getting this done. It was a difficult thing because knowing that it would affect the businesses along Route six and twenty-eight for the year, two years while I was in there. But in the long run, it would benefit everybody. And the main reason I supported this and pushed forward was a safety issue. And unfortunately, a good friend of mine, who's known as Diesel Day, but David Sherbuck, who has that small engine motor business on onset Ave over by Point Independence on July fifth, sure enough, had a car accident over by the lobster bowl and stuff there. I think the lobster pot. And has been in intensive care for the last three weeks. And I'm just really upset that this is, we had a fight to get this done. And it hit home, it homes me, excuse me, it hits home for me really hard when I see a good friend who's been injured, and that's a story.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz, do you have any announcements?
Yeah, just a couple. First of all, I wanted to just bring to everyone's attention that Grace Morrison, who I think most of you know, grew up as a child and finished school through Wareham. She was a guest to the Historical Society last Saturday and did a great performance. I was really impressed with her. Her career continues to grow, and she is now being asked to co-write in Nashville. So that, and the second announcement is the Wareham Land Trust Annual Meeting is tonight. Right now. And that's it.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. The WRA did do two public information sessions, one on Thursday evening and one on Saturday morning. I want to thank Howie Smith for bringing his fire engine on Saturday. Unfortunately, the turnout was was not as much as we had hoped. Ms. Wertz, could you mute yourself? And Mr. Slaven, you as well, please? Thanks. It wasn't as much as we had hoped. However, anybody who goes out when it's a hundred degrees out is, you know, what they say about mad dogs and Englishmen go out in the noonday sun. Very interesting schematics. There is also online a survey, and we hope that you will go into that. You can just go into the Wareham website and you'll find it. Or you can read the very nice article at Wareham we put online. And also in their paper yesterday, I guess. And take the survey that way. And the second announcement is that the WRA was was able to collect over six hundred and four thousand dollars today from the sale of what's known as the Cedar property at Bay Point. Congratulations to the WRA and the persistence that it took to close that property sale. And that's it. Now I will go to appointments, reappointments and interviews. We have two reappointments. And then we also have a new appointment. So I will accept a motion on Lori Benson. You're muted, Ms. Wertz. Sorry.
I would open a hearing for the Community Events Committee term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Appointment for Lori Benson, and this is.
It doesn't need to be here, and you just need to make a motion to appoint her.
They're just, it's an emotion. It's been hard getting this thing started today.
That's okay. I know you had trouble getting into the meeting.
I make a motion that we reappoint Lori Benson to Community Events Committee for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This has been in that committee for nine years. I think that's.
Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Chadwick seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to reappoint? All those in favor, say aye. And I will roll call Mr. Slaven.
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. A reappointment to the Veterans Council? Go ahead.
I make a motion that we reappoint Julio Rodrick Jr. to the Veterans Council for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Is there, okay, motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to reappoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. And the next is an appointment of Ron Bessie to the Wareham Redevelopment Authority to a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Because he's a selectman, those appointments are only one year long. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion that Ron Bessie be appointed to the Wareham Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I would remind all of the appointees that you must provide your certificate of having taken the ethics course as well as your acknowledgement that you have read and understand the open meeting law before you can be sworn in. Thank you very much. Let's go to accept the donation of two sets of aluminum beach bleachers, which is item seven C.
I make a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Sullivan, do you want to speak to that donation or not? The donation of the aluminum bleachers at the Hammond School?
No, I think this would be Mr. Chadwick's bellywreak.
Mr. Chadwick, go ahead.
Yes, I believe Mr. Struthers is actually in the waiting.
Oh, yes, he is. Yes. Could you let Mr. Struthers in under Village Hoops, Mr. White? I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Mr. Struthers.
So. There we go.
Good evening, Mr. Struthers. How are you?
Good evening. How is everyone?
Good thinking. Could you tell us about your donation of the bleachers to the Hammond School Playground?
Yes, so last weekend, my stepdad and I, with a couple, couple others, we put together the bleachers. It was a project that I proposed with the United Way of Greater New Bedford. So they actually accepted my proposal, and I put up the the money to get the things done. And then I'll be reimbursed through the United Way. So I'm thankful thankful for the opportunity. I know they got to great use last weekend at the ribbon cutting at the Scotty Montero Foundation did last weekend.
Thanks, Mr. Struthers. Mr. Chadwick, your turn.
I I was, I had the privilege of talking with Mr. Struthers on this and getting, helping get everything going with it. And I just have to say I'm very thankful for everything he's done for the course there in onset and what he does for the youth in this town. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Struthers, it's nice to see you. The last time I saw you was a long time ago.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm still, I'm still around, still doing basketball stuff.
I know you are, and I just, it's so nice that you have chosen to give back to your community. I really want to say thank you. And I know that you work with Mr. Sullivan as well as Mr. Chadwick, because in order to put things on town property, you need to have Mr. Sullivan's permission, which of course he gave you gratefully. Great.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will accept a motion, Ms. Wertz, to accept. Yep.
I make a motion that we accept a donation of two three-row sets of aluminum bleachers to the Hammond School Playground from Village Hoops Basketball.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Excellent. So any further discussion on the motion to accept? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Absolutely, yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Struthers. We very much appreciate your donation and the time that you put in for the kids of this town. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you guys' time as well.
All right. Good night. Thank you. Let's go to, we have. Let's go to the item seventy, which we would be accept the donation. I'll just take a motion from you, Ms. Wertz. Accept the donation of seventy, which is from AD Makepeace.
I make a motion that we accept the donation from AD Makepeace Company to the Council on Aging in the amount of one thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents for the purchase of a defibrillator.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to accept the generous donation, which would be used to purchase the defibrillator for the Council on Aging. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just the comment that it's really appreciated. It's a, it's an item that has unfortunately a lot of use. You know, with the seeds and stuff, it's great to have that available just in case there's something that happens.
Thank you.
Very much.
Okay. Mr. Chadwick?
Do we, do we know the brand of the, just out of curiosity, of the AD that they're purchasing?
I don't think, well, maybe Mr. Sullivan does, but I don't.
It'd probably be good if Mr. Chadwick can be involved with this selection, because he has the history and, you know, what he does for a living will give us the right, the right product to buy.
Mr. Sullivan?
No.
No? Okay. Let's accept the donation and let's not confuse it. Okay, so the motion has been made to accept. And with a second, and I will take a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. It is unanimous. Okay. One more quickie one, the D, Ms. Wertz, the hundred dollar donation, please.
I make a motion that we accept a donation from Marilyn Knowles to the Council on Aging in the amount of a hundred dollars in memory of Judy Peterson.
Thank you very much. And a second to that, please?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a generous donation in memory of Judy Peterson. Any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
My, Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. Okay, we now are about to have a seven fifteen hearing, so I would ask that Mr. Patel be let in, and I don't see him. Mr. Patel, if you're here, could you raise your hand, please? Mr. Patel, I'll call for you again. There you are. Matthew Porter, you are representing Mr. Patel? Would you let Matthew Porter in, I guess, please?
Hi, good evening, board. How are you? Mr. Patel has not joined us.
Okay, okay, hang on one second. Is Mr. Patel coming, Mr. Porter?
Yes, he is, as of an hour ago.
Okay, I will call for him again. Mr. Patel, if you're here, could you please raise your hand? Ashish is Mr. Patel. Would you let him in, please? Thank you. I will accept a motion, Ms. Wertz, to open the hearing.
Make a. I make a motion that we open a hearing for an application from NAP Liquors Corp., DBA The Jug Shop, two hundred and nineteen Main Street, Wareham, asks for an annual package goods store wines and malt license under the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws of the year twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second to the motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
My, Ms. Wertz?
I just have a question before I vote.
We need to open the hearing first.
Yes.
Thank you. And myself, yes, the hearing is now open. What is your question, Ms. Wertz?
My question is, when I look at this on, on the department approvals, the inspections is not.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Okay, that question will come after the presentation from the petitioner.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Porter, I take it you are a representative of Mr. Patel?
Yes, I am the attorney for NAP Liquors Corp. Before the board.
Could you identify yourself, full name and all that other good stuff for the record, and as well as in identifying Mr. Patel?
I would be happy to. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the Attorney of the Year in DeJohn Flippo in East of Massachusetts. I'm the attorney for NAP Liquors Corp. Along with me is Ashish Patel. Mr. Patel is the President Treasurer Secretary, one hundred percent shareholder of NAP Liquors Corp. as well.
Thank you. Would you, one of you, please speak to your application?
Sure. So before the board, this is an application for a wine and malt, otherwise known as a beer and wine license at two nineteen Main Street in Wareham. The Jug Shop, which operated for nearly seventy years in town, held an all-alcohol license up until, I believe, the fall of last year, where that license was moved over to East Wareham Liquors. Since that point, Mr. Patel has taken over that location from his brother. He was actually an employee of that store as well. They've thought of different things to do with that location. I have contemplated the reopening of a convenience store, which in this market is just extremely difficult without the boost, you know, from wine and malt. And so through, through that process of reviewing their options, they have landed on opening up what would essentially be a convenience store with wine and malt, you know, trying to specialize on the craft side of the beer market as well. So this is a very experienced ownership group. They've operated that, at that location and certainly believe that they can be, you know, a good fit in town once again. So that is what's before the board. Mr. Patel is tip certified. They ran a very clean operation while they were there. So with that, I can certainly answer any questions that the board may have, and Mr. Patel can as well.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that you all mute yourself. There's a terrible echo, and I believe one of you must have a phone going at the same time. It's very difficult for the audience to hear if we are all contributing to the noise. Mr. Patel, do you choose to address the board?
What I would say, Ma, can you say I'm happy with that?
Okay, thank you. I will now ask if anyone of my board members has a question. If you do, please raise your hand. Mr. Chadwick, I saw your hand first.
If I'm not mistaken, just to clarify, I get this right here, the Jug Shop is on Main Street, right across from the, was it the town parking lot right there?
Yeah, basically across from the. Yes. You, you have a terrible echo, Mr. Chadwick.
Do you guys have any?
You're gonna have to repeat that question.
I can never have any. Good luck with internet here. Give me one second.
Thank you.
Yeah. To me for one second. Sorry, it's right there.
Yeah, that's fine. I would allow you to text me your question. I will read it out loud, and you could nod your head saying, yes, that was your question?
No, Madam Chair, but why don't we just hold off, move to the next people?
Okay.
Chadwick fixes this. I would not recommend that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Slaven, your hand is up. I'll allow you to ask questions next, please. Mr. Chadwick, I'm going to ask you to mute yourself.
The first question is, the ownership. Is this particular, this particular Patel have any, any ownership in any other of the liquor stores in Wareham?
He does not, no.
Would you like to repeat that, Convenio?
He does not, no. Yes or no?
Okay. My other question, if there was a lease that was held by the previous person running that business, that location, and my understanding was that lease was still in effect. So what is the status of the lease? Because whose name is lease under now?
Yeah. I'd be happy. Yeah, Cassandra had requested that a couple of times from our office. We provided it again this morning. There was an assignment of lease from the, with the new landlord, because that property was sold to NAP Liquors Corp., which is my client. So there, there is a copy of the lease that, that the board should have at this point.
We don't have it.
I sent it to Cassandra this morning.
We were sent it earlier today, Mr.
It's, it's come through. I got, I got the email, but there's no copy of the lease at all in that email, just so you know.
Thank you. I do have it. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Slaven?
No, we'll wait till the next hearing on that.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Wertz, do you have any questions?
Just want to say, I also got a copy of that lease. And then my question goes back to what I jumped forward with early on, and that is, we don't have an inspections approval signed off on this yet. All the rest of the signatures seem to be in place.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, Mr. Sullivan, do you, do you have a question?
Yeah, Madam Chair. So it's obviously, it's very supportive having that we don't have vacancy on, on Main Street. I don't know if you've gone behind the Merchant's Way recently, but the excellent job from Unismo Maintenance, it is frankly park-like back there right now. One of the biggest things we've had since the closing of the Jug Shop is no more litter of alcohol, like bottles, things back there. I mean, it was a disaster for the longest time. And what's allowed us to help clean it up is we're not picking up bottles every, every five seconds. It's really helped clean up the area. So if there's going to be alcohol that's sold and taken from the premises, I'd really love to hear, because I hate to say it, but, I mean, it's not anecdotal evidence. It's, since it's shut down, the amount of trash back there along the tracks has dissipated. So I'd love to hear a plan or, or something to help with that litter back there, because it, it was terrible, and it's so much better right now.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Porter, I'll allow you to answer the question.
Yeah, I can certainly understand that from the board's perspective. I believe, and we were involved with the prior ownership, you know, one of the larger concerns there was, was the sale of the NIPS, which I believe is now disallowed by the town, which is, which has been fairly commonplace across the state. So I, I think that in and of itself will certainly resolve a portion of that issue. You know, I think our clients will need to look at, you know, the sale of, of single-serving, you know, beers, things along those lines that, that can cause, you know, significant issues. I mean, certainly, they would be happy, you know, to work with the town to come up with a plan, and whether that be, you know, employee, you know, going outside, keeping a chart of how often they're going out side to review, you know, where those, where those products may be. It's not good for their business either. And I think they were, in a lot of ways, a lot of our clients, including these folks, you know, relieved by the banning of the NIPS. You know, they felt as though those needed to be a necessary part of their business in order to keep up with the other businesses. It's, it's not good for them either, to have people continuously coming in, you know, and purchasing those over and over again. It doesn't exactly attract the best clientele necessarily. So I, I do think the banning of the NIPS will help that situation. I do think that this ownership group would need to be, you know, on board and, and certainly would be so, in working with the board to come up with, with a plan to make sure that everything, you know, continues in the way that it's going. So I, I think they, they don't want to be part of that problem. I think they would want to try to be part of the solution.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, does that answer your question, sir? Or, yes, Mr. Chadwick, I'll let you try again.
I switched to three different internet providers in the last three seconds. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So my question is, do you guys have any violations for selling to minors over the last couple of years?
So this would be a brand-new ownership group for Ashish. So the NAP Liquors Corp. is a, is a brand-new corporation. And so Mr. Patel will be taking over that corporation. So it has not been in existence. It would be, it's a brand-new corporation.
Mr. Chadwick?
Okay.
You're all set then? You're all set?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have one question. There's only one TIPS-certified individual. How is that going to work?
Well, it's not open right now. So Mr. Patel is alcohol tip certified as their employees, you know, as they take employees on, if, if the board so approves, then all those employees will be required to be tip certified as well. But certainly, they didn't want to put the cart before the horse. So that, that's a requirement of their, their ownership group, that, that any employee be tip certified. Certainly, we'd be happy to provide those certificates, you know, to the town as, as hiring, you know, begins to occur.
Thank you. Are there any of the questions from the board? Then I will ask for a motion to close the hearing only. Oh, yeah, no, excuse me. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? If, if you would, please raise your hand. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this application? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will now ask for a motion only to close this hearing. You're muted.
I make a motion that we close the hearing for the application from NAP Lab Liquors Corporation, DBA The Jug Shop, two hundred and nineteen Main Street, Wareham, asks for an annual package goods store wines and malt license under the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws of the year twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. There's a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. I'm now going to, is there any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote to close the hearing. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is closed. We now have a hearing. It is seven twenty-five. May I have a motion, please, to open the second hearing, Ms. Wertz?
I make a motion to open the hearing for application from NAP Liquors Corp., DBA The Jug Shop, two hundred and nineteen Main Street, Wareham, asks for a seasonal package goods store, all alcoholic license under the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws for the year twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. May I have a second to that motion? Thank you. May I have a second to that motion?
If we second it, shall we be voting on the right?
No, I'm going to hear both applications of this, before we make a, a motion to either one of them, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. May I have a motion to second the opening of the hearing?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on opening the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Yes, the hearing is now open. Um, Mister Porter, I'm presuming that you would be making a presentation on behalf of Mister Patel, is that correct?
Yes, uh, so once again, for the record, Matthew Porter, the attorney for NAP Liquors Corp., along with me is Ashish Kumar Patel. Uh, Mister Patel is the president and shareholder of NAP Liquors Corp. Um, w- without doing too much of a retread here, uh, this is an application for the seasonal all alcohol license, uh, for the same location, uh, as our prior hearing. Uh, I, I, I won't add a whole lot to our prior discussion, other than to say that this was a location that, uh, had an all alcohol, uh, package store license and operated, you know, very successfully out of this location for an extended period of time. So there's certainly a track record here. Um, I, I do know that there were prior issues with the NIPS, um, whi- which we've discussed, uh, as well. Uh, those are now banned by the town. Um, a- and so I, I, I don't think that those necessarily come into play either. Um, what this would allow our client to do, uh, certainly during the, uh, seasonal months in town, uh, which is, is the licenses intended, uh, would be to expand, um, their products. It'll allow them to operate more successfully and, and certainly, uh, helps account for the population growth during that period of time in town. So, uh, but once again, with that, I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. If one of you has a question, please raise your hand. Mister, Mister Slaven, is that raising your hand? Yes. Mister Slaven, do you have questions, sir?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, we're, we're gonna have two licenses running at the same time. Um, I believe the ABCC is gonna have some issues. Uh, because you're gonna have one entrance for both businesses technically. And the other issue is going to be the storage of beer and wine versus all alcohol in the same facility and not have that completely separated out, which I believe is required. I believe the ABC seems gonna have some issues with this. Thank you.
Is that a question, Mister?
Caution and a statement.
Thank you. Mister Porter, please.
That has not been an issue at any of other locations. Uh, certainly we represent other applicants for beer and wine licenses and then get all alcohol seasonal licenses. I, the process, uh, from my understanding, which I think it would be the same in Wareham, would be that they, when the seasonal license kicks in, the beer and wine license is turned into the town, uh, you don't have two licenses operating at the same time. And then once the seasonal license lapses, um, you know, the product obviously needs to be cleared out or restricted, and that goes back to the town at that point, so.
I'm sorry, I, that, I did not understand what you just said. Could you say it again, please, sir?
Okay, so during the seasonal months, the, the licensee would operate if it was granted with a seasonal all alcohol license. Uh, once the seasonal all alcohol license, the timeframe, which is set by the town, expires, the seasonal all alcohol license would then be turned into the town, uh, they would be able to operate under their beer and wine license during that period of time. Um, any all alcohol obviously would need to be restricted or cleared out. The product would need to be cleared out at that period of time.
Thank you. Mister Slaven, does that?
No, I still think there's gonna be a, uh, it'll have to be a decision by the, uh, ABCC on that, because you're running two licenses at the same time. It's two separate operations. It's not, it's term of the town. I don't believe this term will exist and whatever you want.
Uh, they're, they're certainly not shy. They, they will let us know if they have a problem.
Yes, so therefore, I'm just letting go. I think there's gonna be an issue.
Thank you. Um, do, uh, do any of my other members have questions? If so, please raise your hand, Ms. Words. Do you have a question?
Yes, um, I'm looking at the application for this seasonal license and I'm at number ten manager application, and I have a couple of questions here. One is at, for ten B is asked, is the manager a US citizen? It says yes, and it a- asks to, to have attached one of the following of proof of citizenship, US passport, voter certificate, birth certificate, or naturalization papers. I don't see any of that attached to this application. And
Excuse me, just hold on, Mister Porter.
And then the, the second part is that same ten, item D, that is prior disciplinary action. Have you held a beneficial or financial interest in or been the manager of a license to sell alcohol beverages that was subject to disciplinary action? And yes is checked with no further explanation. So those are my two areas of question.
Mister Porter, can you answer that?
Yeah, so in the package, um, I have a copy, will submit this to town. There, there are naturalization papers are provided there. So at least in the package that I have, which is the same, that was provided to town, it is right before the lease itself, um, and right after the query request, request forms.
It is, in fact, in our papers, yes, sir, we have it.
Oh, okay, alright, um.
What was that, the question?
Yeah, a- and as for that question, I, Ashish, I, I do not believe had any disciplinary action. Uh, I'll certainly let him, uh, compound on that, but I, if that's the case, then it, you know, I, we certainly just have to correct that, you know, those are boxes that get checked off, so it may be the wrong box, but, uh, Ashish, can you?
Yeah, uh, sure. Uh, I've been probably in the liquor business almost forty years. Uh, I never saw underage or anybody like that.
So you're, you were stating that you have no, um, no trainees. Thank you for the record.
Yeah.
You all set, Ms. Words, with your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna ask the same question that Mister Slaven did, but I'm gonna ask it slightly differently. Explain to me how you're going to switch over from one license to the other with the, with the inventory, cause that.
Yeah, so they, they would obviously have to run down the inventory, you know, as much as they possibly can. I mean, this is not a large store, so i- i- it's not as though you're running down inventory of a ten thousand square foot store. Um, so a- as that season begins, um, you know, come to an end, they'd obviously run down that inventory at that point. I- is then on the licensee to, to, you know, make an attempt to either sell off that inventory or to return it to its vendors. Um, i- if that is not entirely possible, the ABCC allows you to essentially block off that area, uh, with explicit signs that, you know, that product i- is not for sale. Um, so oftentimes you'll, you'll see that an entire area blocked off. Um, but from their perspective, you, you just try to run it down as best you can, so that you're not, you know, being left with, with much inventory, because it, it, it hurts them as well. I mean, that's a whole entire, you know, several months that they're not gonna be able to sell that product. Um, you know, with, with the liquor, it's not as time sensitive, uh, because the product doesn't necessarily go bad. Um, but at the same time, it, they, they wouldn't wanna free up that, that area where the liquor is to, to be able to expand back to beer and wine, so.
Thank you.
That, that would be the process. It would be, have to be marked off explicitly.
When you say marked off, are you talking about putting a yellow stripe on the road, or are you, or are you actually gonna create, um, like, you know, plywood walls or something like that?
No, I don't think it would be a plywood wall situation. I, I, I think it would be, you know, that there would be markings up, you know, and if, if the town is not comfortable with that, I, I think our clients can certainly work with this, so that all the product is out of the store by that period of time. I mean, I, I don't think that's an issue. And I, I think that's probably a cleaner split for our clients. It, it doesn't cause confusion with the, with the citizens and, you know, maybe the board feels more comfortable with that. So certainly we could, we could, you know, venture to do that without, you know, that, that may get rid of any confusion.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from my board members?
I can say that is, uh, in the like, uh, after the, like, for two months, I can, like, if, we won't have that much inventory after the Thanksgiving and Christmas. We gonna like run off and we can put it in the back room if there is any left.
Thank you.
Be the other option.
Thank you. Is there anybody here in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of the petitioner? Raise your hand, please. I see no one, and may I have anyone who would like to speak against the applicant? Please raise your hand. And I see no one. I will ask for a motion to close the hearing. You're muted, Ms. Words.
Make a motion that we close the hearing on the application from NAP Liquors Corp., DBA, the Jug Shop, two hundred and nineteen Main Street, Wareham, asked for a seasonal packaged goods store, all alcoholic license, under the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws for the year twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is now closed. I will now accept a motion. We have two applications in front of us.
So my question is, do you want them, a combined motion or one at a time?
Separate.
Okay. I make a motion that we, um, approve the application for NAP Liquors Corp., DBA, the Jug Shop, two hundred and nineteen Main Street, Wareham, asked for an annual packaged goods store wines and malt license, under the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws of the year of twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second to that motion?
Sure.
Motion made and seconded to approve. That was a second, right, Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, is there any further discussion on the motion to grant? Mister Slaven?
I'd like to have a condition on the beer and wine that the, uh, NAP is responsible for some type of program in the area claim. The reason I pushed for the NIP, uh, ban, which we put through town meeting, was because that area was a severe problem, not this owner, but a prior owner who didn't really care what happened.
Are you asking Ms. Words to amend her motion?
Yes.
Would you repeat what your request is, sir?
Uh, basically that NAP provided town with a plan, program of how they would clean up the area.
About keep it clean and clean it up?
Yes, clean up the areas, whether you do with alcohol.
Thank you, Ms. Words. Would that be, could you amend your motion to include that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Um.
Just yes or no is fine. Mister Chadwick, is that okay as your second? Thank you.
Yes.
We have a motion made in a second, and we have had it, um, restated with a condition. All, I will go for a roll call vote. All those in favor, Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that is granted four zero zero. I will now accept a second motion. Are you raising your hand, Mister Slaven? Thank you. Ms. Words, I'll accept a second motion.
I make a motion that we accept, um, the application from NAP Liquors Corp., DBA, the Jug Shop, two hundred and nineteen Main Street, Wareham, asked for a seasonal packaged goods store, all alcoholic license, under the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws for the year twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Your motion was to approve the application.
To approve the application.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Um, I would like to, uh, ask you to amend your motion to include the fact that we are very, that the segregation of the product between the two licenses very clearly delineated by some, something other than that it, that the, that the inventory is never to be combined or conjoined.
That, that's perfectly fine. It, it would never be, and just to clarify, it would never be on the, the sale floor whatsoever if that license is not in operation. So if anything, it would be in storage.
Okay, could you, um, would you accept that amendment to your motion, Ms. Words?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Mister Chadwick, would you accept that amendment to? Okay, thank you. There's a motion made in seconded and, um, with that delineation expressed, and I'm going to go for a roll call vote, please, Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yeah.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. The license will not be available until Monday. Um, and we, before we give it to you, we will be requiring that you have a sign off from the, is it the fire department, Ms. Words, that you had picked up?
Inspection.
Inspection service. Thank you.
Uh, ju- and just to add to the record, this still has to go off to ABCC, so you guys aren't, we, we won't have approval for another six weeks, knowing the state, so.
We, we understand that, sir. I just wanna make sure that you understand our requirements.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you. Good night, Mister Porter, and good night, Mister Patel. Thank you for joining us.
So that is the yes on both, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Ms. Words, we will now go to seven A, which is to discuss, uh, street parking with Eversource. If you are with Eversource, please, would you raise your hand? Ms. Williamson and Mister St. Martin and Ryan, no last name. Would you let them in, Mister White, please? And when you are let into the meeting, would you all, I will ask you to identify yourselves with your first and last name, but I'll wait until you're all in the meeting. Um, Ms. Words, would you just announce what it is that we will be doing right now?
Okay, we will, I announced that we are having a discussion and possible vote to approve Eversource street parking.
Thank you. Um, I see two and a half of you. Brian, could you, um, give us your video as well? I will ask you for your last name, or I can get it from Ms. Williamson. Um, which one of you sort of the head person in this application? Okay, Mister St. Martin, could you, uh, identify yourself as well as the other individuals here representing Eversource, please?
Good evening, boy. Um, I'm Jason St. Martin, manager of facility operations for Eversource in Massachusetts. Uh, here with me tonight is Emily Williamson. She's a civil engineer from Shive Hattery, who drew up the plans for this. And then Ryan Earl is, um, a community relations specialist, uh, that works with the town of Wareham, as well as other towns in the southern region.
Could you spell his last name, sir?
It is E-A-R-L.
E-A-R-L, thank you very much.
Yep.
Um, why don't you make your presentation then, Mister St. Martin?
Um, I'm actually gonna let Emily go ahead and, and present.
Go ahead.
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, sorry about that. Did we use all day long call? Everybody's the wrong thing.
Yeah, definitely a long day. Um, so pretty much we're helping Eversource try to alleviate their, uh, current parking, uh, constraints at their Doty Street, uh, facility. And so this project, uh, is focused on the east side of North Carver Road. Um, we're, we're posing to add eleven perpendicular parking stalls, um, kind of on the north half of the project area, and then three parallel parking stalls on the south, uh, end of the project area. And these would, uh, just be employee vehicle overflow parking, um, shouldn't be any, like, equipment trucks or anything parked here. Um, there is an existing utility path, so we, we do, uh, we will make sure that that stays open and accessible, uh, that no cars will be parking there. Uh, we, this project would stay out of the fifty-foot, uh, no activity wetland buffer, cause there are, uh, wetlands to the east of this project. And then if stormwater management were to be required, we do have some area, uh, sectioned off for a, a small infiltration basin. Um.
Are you able to screen share? Because this map that we got is almost eligible to anybody who's over twenty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. This is easy for you guys to see?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Okay, sorry about that. Um, so let me back up, yeah, so, um, intersection of Doty and Carver, so we're, we're looking at this, uh, northeast section of Carver Road there near the turnaround. Um, and then as I was kinda saying, uh, we're suggesting, uh, you know, right now we're showing all gravel parking, um, but could be paved if the town so desires, but we have eleven perpendicular stalls, um, a, you know, a break to keep the, uh, maintenance access to this utility uh, road there. And then we have three parallel parking stalls. Um, and so, uh, as you can see, the stalls are either all within the right of way, or, you know, with the perpendicular ones, they are, uh, partially within the right of way. Um, and so kinda looking to see if the town would be open and allowing us to have this street parking within your right of way there. Um, and if so, from that, from that point on, we would continue with site plan review or any other. And if so, from that, from that point on, we would continue with site plan review or any other town required reviews, but just seeing if we can keep this project moving forward.
Thank you. Any member of my board, if you have a question of the young lady, would you raise your hand, please? I, Ms., I, Mr. Slaven, I saw you first, and then I will go to Ms. Words. Go ahead, Mr. Slaven.
I'm just asking the question. They come before any of our licensee boards, either planning, zoning, or conservation?
Oh, we did talk. Yeah, we brought this project up to building with David, and he had directed us to go with the Board of Selectmen. That's the only board we presented at so far. I think next week we were presenting at the road commission meeting.
So you don't have any intention going for either planning or zoning or conservation?
We will. The, the way it was explained was we need to get a Board of Selectmen approval first and road commission possibly approval there if we could, if you would even. Consider letting us have parking within the right of way. And then from that point on, we would move on to Conservation Commission site plan approval. Once, once they have your okay, kind of.
Yeah, I'm sorry to be difficult, but that doesn't work for me at all. We've, we've had this happen before. I've always required that the, whether it's conservation or Z B A or planning, that the sign up is there before it comes to us.
Okay, yeah.
My personal opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven. Ms. Words, do you have questions of Ms. Williamson?
Yes. Ms. Williamson, when you look at the EverSource property that you have along here. What do you have that is possible open space for parking on your property versus on the street?
Yeah, so fortunately, there's not, this will be a little easier to see with the property lines popping up there. As you can see, most of whatever Source owns is currently in use or developed. Already. And so there's not a lot of area to add there. And then they do own this piece here where we're proposing the parking in the right of way. But with that wetland just to the east, obviously, we're not gonna build in that and got to maintain that fifty foot buffer. So it kind of limits the amount of area that EverSource actually has of their own property to develop on.
Ms. Words?
Yeah, I, I saw, I feel about this very similar to what Mr. Slaven feels is. Where there are wetlands, where it's right of way, where it can be congestive problem or. Conservation problem. I would encourage EverSource to look at what they can do with their own property, but in the meantime, if this is the way you want to go, I would like to see what. Is said by the various support boards that Ms. Slaven's already named.
Thank you.
Yeah, so are you looking for formal approval for conservation or more just like a, an email cursory review by those folks?
Ms. Words?
They, they actually, I would, I would expect your plan to go in front of them at their annual meeting, not simply. A memo from the, the leader, the main chair of the particular committees. They generally will have their. Group, their whole committee look at something like this.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, you have your hand up, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairperson. I think we're in a bit of a chicken and egg situation. I think that the, if it were me, if I were them, they're trying to figure out if the town has a interest in this to allow this. If we do, then they would go forward to get the, the permitting and go through all the necessary steps. So if the answer is no, let's tell them no. If the answer is yes, as long as it goes through these proper steps. Let's do that to give some sort of guidance, because how are they going to know what to do?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'm going to express my feelings. I don't believe that it is proper in any manner, shape, or form. For the Board of Selectmen to give parking rights on a right of way. It impedes first responders. It impedes snow plowing. It impedes all sorts of traffic. And while I appreciate the fact that there may be limited parking on that particular site. I am not willing to put our roads at your individual disposal. I, I, I'm very much not in favor of doing this. That's just my opinion. I will accept a motion. Oh, Mr. Chadwick, go ahead, sorry.
There we go, sorry. So you guys are looking to use town land to park on, correct?
Yes.
No. What's that?
It is, it is being requested that they are able to park partially in the right of way, in the roadway.
Okay, so, but then partially on their own property or partially on town property?
The road.
Partially on. Yeah, partially on EverSource property.
Okay. So. Yeah. So here, here's my thing, my, my biggest thing here, and, and I, I, I guess you, you guys are a multimillion dollar company. And I'm saying this with all due respect, you have a lot of land over there. There's got to be some other situation that you guys can come up that you're not gonna. Park on town property that would inconvenience people pulling down there. And inconvenience, like Mrs. Whiteside said. You know, emergency vehicles getting down there. I, I'm, I'm against this. I'm sorry.
Mr. Sullivan, you have your hand up? Pass on. Mr. Slaven, you had your hand up?
I just want to clarify my position. If they went before the other boards and everything was approved, which would basically take into effect. Everything people have objections to, then as far as I'm concerned, as a selectman, if they come back to this board, I would, I would say okay. If they had approval of those boards. I'm not saying that I would go ahead and say no, which is a possibility now, but. The bottom line is I would like to see those boards that require the sign off, which takes into effect everybody else's concerns as well. Thank you.
Let me, let me clarify what you say in light of what Mr. Sullivan said. Would you vote to allow them to use the public right of way?
If they were able to get through zoning or planning, which would have those questions, they would be able to make that decision as well. And also conservation as far as any water runoff, etc. If they come back and say yes, then I would have no problem.
Mr. Slaven, I would remind you that the selectmen are in charge of the roads of the town of Wareham.
Understand, but I also know that the planning board for years took care of that stuff. And the planning board is what normally. When someone has an application to do something, goes through all those particular items, whether it's okay or not, okay, the safety, etc., everything else as well.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, yeah, Madam Chair. So I just, I just want to, would you, would you mind zooming out to the, the more of the map zoom, excuse me, map, map section? So if we're looking at it, the left-hand side is the EverSource property. You also own the right-hand side as well?
Correct, yeah.
Here's what I found.
Oh, geez, my phone's yelling at me. Watch. This is essentially after the two homes in the beginning. This is after the, the highway was built. North Carver Road is bisected by the highway. It becomes a road to nowhere, just down to your, to the EverSource property, correct?
Correct.
So in essence, except for maybe some of the wetlands buffer, how is this different than somebody? You know, kind of their, their driveway or such going through our, our town right of way. I also, I looked down that they're the owners on both sides and, I don't know, I, I get it. We certainly, we're, we're, this is impacting us in other parts of the, the town and such. I, you know, I'd be interested to see how this, if there, if you're saying there's no other alternatives or this is the best. I'd also like to know, you know, the impact to the two homes that's in the, a little bit further up, because obviously they would be. My biggest concern is living there. Is it, you know, all hours of the night? It's, I'm sure when there's, there's big storms, this area could be, could be inundated. So it's just food for thought. Again, both sides of the road, North Carver Road is one after those two homes. It's a road to nowhere, if you will. Just my two cents.
Thank you. Well. Board members, I will accept a motion.
I will second. I will make a motion to vote to approve the EverSource street parking plan.
With any conditions or none?
Well, I don't think we've stated conditions here unless it's, unless those are conditions are to get the approval of the other three boards, so we can make it with or without it.
I thought that you had the questions about those other boards.
Well, I think that they might have some input, but as I listen to this myself personally. I have not seen anything from EverSource that shows the land, their own land that they have available. And when I look at taking up right of way, especially during winter seasons, etc. We've had no real look at what this is gonna do to those other homes, you know. I, I'd like to see personally EverSource come back and show us where they could put it on their own land. I'm not comfortable with this.
Okay, I'm misunderstanding you, because I thought you just said to, that you moved to approve it.
Well, we, you asked me to make a motion, and what is listed here is a vote to approve the EverSource street parking.
Yeah, well, it's possible vote. Yeah, if you are, okay, you can make that motion. The motion is to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chadwick? Oh, I need a second. I need a second first. Is there a second to her motion?
All right, I will second, just.
For discussion purposes. Mr. Chadwick?
What is the possibilities of discontinuing the town right of way of that road? If I'm saying that right, and it might be a question more or less for Mr. Bowen.
If Mr. Bowen chooses to answer, but I'm not, if he chooses to answer.
Oh, Madam Chairman, I'm not shy.
Okay.
With your permission, the discontinuance of a public way requires vote of town meeting. If town continuance becomes liable for any consequential damages suffered from anyone who has rights that are lost by virtue of the discontinu-
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
On the web, thank.
Uh, Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Ms. Words?
No.
Myself, no. The motion, it loses, and therefore you do not have permission to park on the roadway.
Thank you, board.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
You too.
We are now going to hear from Mr. Paul Turner, who is the Director of Inspeccional Services, and I believe he is with us this evening. Thank you. We'll give you a minute to come into the meeting. Can you remove Ms. Williamson from the meeting as well, please, Mr. White? Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Turner. Would you identify yourself? Some of our members have not yet met you, I don't think.
Sure. Paul Turner, Inspeccional Services.
And you have a presentation for us this evening, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, go for it.
Okay. Thank you for letting me come before the board with my proposal for fee increases. I have reviewed the current fee schedule with the department's inspectors and asked them for their input on what they thought were reasonable and fair. Excuse me, new rates. I'm not sure when the fees were last reviewed or adjusted here in Wareham. But I thought it was my obligation to bring to the attention of the board that the fees were in need of reevaluation. As far as comparing to other towns, some of the fees are higher and some are lower. But again, we don't know when they were last set. Regardless, I feel what the building department is proposing is reasonable, fair, and in the best interest of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did provide us with the proposed new fees, both residential, commercial. Plumbing and gas, electrical, etc.
Right.
As well as the building permits. And you did provide an enormous amount of information of where other towns, cities and towns around us that had. Where you had actually looked into what the fees were being charged.
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the, of Mr. Turner, Mr. Slaven?
Hold on. I think there was another piece that was also forwarded us about.
It was.
Certain ways that they do things that unfortunately the actual time and cost is way, way under value. It was talking about going a different way on that also. I don't know if that's would be voted on at this time or not, but I want to make sure that that does get in somewhere along the line. And also, we should be recommending to Mr. Turner, who is doing an excellent job, by the way, in a very short period of time. That he basically, through Mr. Sullivan, submits to the Capitol Planning Committee his need for vehicles, etc. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, he did, Mr. Turner did submit and a request to. Increase the fees for determinations about lot sizes. Mr. Turner, could you speak to that as well, please?
Yeah, lot determination letters. I think the best way to approach this is, I'm gonna read the email that I sent to the board, so the public can.
Yeah, thank you.
Board of Selectmen, I'd like to have a discussion tomorrow during our meeting about the building department performing buildable lot determinations for the public. I believe this service puts a tremendous responsibility on the department and the town of Wareham. The current fee is fifty-three dollars. I have spent up to seven hours researching one, and I would estimate to spend at least three hours on a relatively straightforward ones. The applications require a great amount of my time to research, and in my opinion, that time could be better utilized towards other important town and department matters. I had proposed to increase the fee to three hundred dollars for the lot determination letter in hopes to only attract those applicants that are truly serious. The lot determination is only for dimensional purposes. The lot determination does not consider flood zone, conservation concerns, sewer access, etc. My hope is that their money would be best spent engaging an attorney to perform this task research, because the fee would be similar. After more thought on this issue, I believe it would be best that the lot determination research be performed by a legal professional. I would like to pose that the department charge a review fee of one hundred and fifty dollars. The applicant would submit a narrative of the lot ownership. Proving the lot is pre-existing, non-conforming, buildable house lot as per Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty A, and the town of Wareham's zoning. By a board certified in good standing attorney in the state of Massachusetts, all the ownership chain of the law in question. Excuse me, and submit all supporting documentation in a fashion that the department would be verifying the attorney's research, not performing the research for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Okay, I have one. Are there any, yes, Mr. Slaven, you have your hand up. I'm sorry.
Yes, on this particular one piece, I think I would be a little more comfortable if we were to put this on an agenda in a next meeting or two meetings later, have Mr. Bowen go through all of this. It's, it's not really straightforward, easy. There's some things that maybe have complications better, so I'm not very comfortable voting on this one piece. But I wanted to have it brought up, because I think it's very important.
Thank you. Ms. Words?
Am I?
Yes.
muted?
No, you're live.
Can you hear me? Mr. Turner, very nice to meet you.
Thanks.
It's, it's, I have to tell you, I, first of all, I know nothing about doing. It's, it's, I have to tell you, I, first of all, I know nothing about doing this kind of thing. However, I really appreciate what you gave us to educate us. The, um, the fact that you provided the information from a number of other towns really helped me as I. And I spent a, a, a fair amount of time reviewing it all just to seek for comparison sakes. The types of things that were looked at, et cetera. Overall, if, if you look at, um, your suggestions for fee, um, increase. What's the average percentage increase? Is it fifty percent, twenty percent, ten percent? What's the average percentage increase? Overall.
I never really did that calculation. I spent a lot of time in the office, especially in the morning when all the inspectors are in. And I'll let the board know that the plumbing and the electrical inspector are still practicing in the trades. So they have a feel that they're still pulling permits in other towns, so they know. That these fees that we have proposed, they're, again, they're fair. Same thing to myself and, um, George Stewart, the local inspector.
Thank you.
So, now I have.
Letters, that would, we could put that on the agenda of the twenty-third. Question, what would be the beginning date of these increased fees, sir?
I think September first.
Thank you.
Get some notice through the website and.
Thank you. I will, yes, Mr. Chadwick.
Just quick saving, I, I, I've been in construction for twenty years as, uh, side work and. Um, I agree with what you've said, you know, everyone else around us is, is going. The cost of construction is going up and it's, it's inevitable. Uh, prices haven't gone up in a long time from what I know from getting permits before. Um, or people I've worked under getting permits, so it's inevitable. If we don't look at this now. We're just gonna be looking at it down the road, and we're gonna have to make the choice sooner or later to go up. So, that's it.
Thank you. I will accept a motion.
I make a motion that we vote to increase inspection services fees. Is that where we want to go with this?
As presented by Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, do you, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, reviewing the document today, I found one thing that I, I was not happy with. It was a misprint on the demolition. The demolition for residential projects, it should be a flat fee of one hundred dollars.
Okay. I see that, yep.
And demolition for the commercial, a flat fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. Everything else as submitted is correct.
Okay, great. Um, with those corrections, um, Ms. Wertz, your motion would be appropriate with the starting date of September first.
So, just to restate, I make a motion that we vote to approve. The increase in inspectional services fees with the start of September thirtieth?
He said first.
September first, I was gonna give them another patient week, but, starting September first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Sir, second to that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven.
That wasn't quick enough. Uh, I would rather make the effective date of October first. We're already, you know, a ways into August and everything else, so I think it'd be cleaner and easier to get it all written up. And available to everybody, so it's at the end of September, the first of October, go ahead. And it's also the last quarter of the year by doing it that way.
Ms. Wertz, would you amend your motion?
The amended emotion reads, um, we will vote to increase the inspectional services fees starting October first, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, and Mr. Chadwick, is that okay with you as your second? Okay, then we understand that those two, um, scriveners errors will have been, uh. Corrected. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Turner, thank you very much. Um, if you could, the one thing that. Um, I would ask you to make sure that you do is that you date each one of these pieces of paper, so that you under, so that. The next time somebody looks at them, it says, you know, reviewed as of whatever. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for, um, a lot of work, and I very much appreciate what you and your department have done so far.
Done well, thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Uh, we will move on to. The motion for seven F, Ms. Wertz, would be to approve the opt-out and reduction, please.
I make a motion that we vote to approve the opt-out and reduction fee applications for curbside billing. FY twenty-three in the amount of two thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Your second to that?
Second.
Thank you, motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick? I didn't hear of you, but. Thank you, Ms. Wertz.
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. Thank you very much. I'll accept a motion to approve the. Um, item G, which would be the abatement rescind, abatement rescindment recommendation.
I make the motion that we vote to approve the abatement rescindment recommendation for curbside billing FY twenty-three. In the amount of two thousand one hundred and ninety dollars to correct abatement errors.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to, um, approve the. Uh, rescindent of the errors. All those, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, okay, excellent. And the next would be. The, um, establish the dates for the twenty twenty-two annual fall town meeting, and. That is. Very much at the end of your packet, or it's right here. So, I will read into the record, um, the process for calling a town meeting. I don't read as fast as Mr. Titlebomb, but I will try. Process for calling a town meeting, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, general business. On Tuesday, August ninth, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Selectmen will establish all dates for the completion of a warrant for the Fall Town Meeting. On Friday, September ninth, twenty twenty-two, will be the last day to post upon the town's principal bulletin board and the town website. Notice of intention of Board of Selectmen to call the Fall Town Meeting for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. And to open the warrant, Wareham Home World Charter dash two dash four C, at least ten days notice before the warrant closes. On Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, it will be the last day for articles and or petitions to be inserted in the warrant. That is ten days or more after the warrant opens. On Tuesday, September twentieth, the Board official. Uh, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Selectmen will officially close the warrant. On Monday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, it is the last day to post upon the town's principal bulletin board and the town website. And deliver a copy of the warrant to the town moderator and to the chairman of the Finance Committee, Wareham Home World Section two dash four D. Warrant is to be delivered no later than the last Monday in September. Then on Monday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, we will have the commencement of the Fall Town Meeting. By Article One, Section One, Fall Town Meeting shall be held on the fourth Monday of October. And then I would ask that we, um. Vote to establish the Fall Town Meeting, which would be to, I will read this one as well. Notice of the fall of the twenty twenty-two Fall Town Meeting Commonwealth Massachusetts Plymouth Shires. Either of the constables of town here have greetings in the name of Commonwealth Massachusetts, and in accordance with the provisions of Division One, Article One, Section Three of the bylaws. Town of Wareham amended, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town of Wareham. That the Fall Town Meeting has been called by the Board of Selectmen to be held at seven P M on Monday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. At which time the business of the town meeting shall be transacted. Last day of submission of warrants to be inserted in the warrant. Tuesday, September twenty, twenty twenty-two. The warrant for this meeting will close Tuesday, September twenty, twenty twenty-two. And you are hereby directed to post this notice upon the town's principal bulletin board on or before Monday. Six, twenty twenty-two, here of fail not, and make due return of this posting with the doings there on to the town clerk, and under our hands of. Our hands, Wareham, this ninth day of August in the year twenty twenty-two, a true copy attest, Wareham Board of Selectmen. Tom Bless, Bessie, Jared S., Chadwick, and Alan H. Slaven. Slavens. May I have a motion to, um, establish the, uh, dates?
I make a motion that we, um, approve the schedule of dates as so read by. Miss Select, Selectwoman Whiteside into the, into the, um. Recording of this.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, I have to do the roll call, I'm sorry. Um, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and then, um, the notice, we just read that, so you don't need to.
Yeah.
Vote on that. Is there any other business to come before this body, under twenty-four hours? Hearing none, I will go to, um, the town administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, uh, I'm glad to see the, uh, I think Alan, do, do you mind muting, Alan?
I think all of you, all of us should mute, I guess.
Um, so. It's been a long couple of weeks, hasn't it, with this, with this non-stop heat, something we're not used to, so. Helping these thunderstorms, I understand it's gonna break the, you know, the long heatwave we've had, so. I appreciate everybody, I'm sure at this point in time, we, everybody's just a little sick and tired of, uh, being, being hot. In fact, it became one of those summers where, reminds you of the P Florida, we go down there to get a tan, but everybody else is pale. Cause they're staying inside the whole time. So, to add to that, we had, we have incredible municipal maintenance department that. On the coolest day of the week last week, which was only eighty-six degrees, so I can only imagine what it was laying asphalt. Did an extremely great job, uh, doing the, uh, doing the Heinz field. There's still more to come, obviously, including some of the curbing, um, some, some railing. And there'll be some more plantings. Couple trees are coming in within the next few weeks if they're really going water. And then really the better plantings or more of the plantings will be towards the end, but. I gotta thank Mr. Mr. Menard and his, and his crew for getting that done, because, um. I will tell you, one of the neighbors told them, you have no business doing this project, you don't have the capabilities of doing it. Which, uh, let me tell you, they, they don't know Dave Menard and his crew. So, uh, I just really wanna take a moment and thank them, it's. It's, it is, especially when you think about all the heat, everything they've been going through and, and doing things, it's, uh. It, it's really, they, they do a tremendous job, so I'm very thankful for them. I, I had an interesting meeting last week, and it was with the, uh, with members of the Oak Grove Cape Verdean Cultural Council. And, uh, they're giving me some updates, something that's, uh, I'm really proud to have in our, in our community. And then, you know, I don't know if people know, that's where the Head Start program is, and I asked them about the, uh, the Head Start program. And sir said, hey, you know, why, so why are you shoving them out? They said, we're not, we're not shoving them out, we're trying to get them to, to, to sign a lease. I said, oh, okay, so it's, um. You know, and that started getting me thinking, because it's. All the stuff that's going on, it seems to be people pulling in, in different directions, we don't. We, you know, it's frustrating, because we don't have the capabilities to knock together. You know, if, if that makes sense, we're all, we all need to sort of pull, and the, the different groups pull in the same direction. And there's only so much energy. We've got some really great engaged people that are working hard, but if, if, if it's all going in different directions. There's no way you're going to move, move forward, if you will. Um, and again, it's not the fault of anyone, but it's just. Everybody has sort of their passion and dream, or they, they, you know, they put the blinders on and start looking in that direction, whether it's, uh. You know, uh, community center, police station, uh, other town activities, I think, I think we're all kind of. Guilty of that, if you will, and, uh, we've got our specific interests and say, well, my charge says this, this is, uh, the, you know, what the charter says I do. Or so forth and so on, and, um, you know, I, I just started thinking. We, we have to get out of that mindset, and it's good, it's leading in, I'm sorry for the, the diet trap here. It's leading into what I've been talking about, is we need to think about the town as a whole. And part of that is all the buildings we have in the town. So, let's kind of, let's, let's lay out the situation, right? Let's, let's look at it. So, sorry about the town buildings we have. We have the multi-service center, which is a little over twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand square feet. Which, um, you know, the COA is housed in there. I think the only other municipal functions we have in there are the, uh. Are, you know, Selectmen's Meeting Room, and then, uh, the, the D N R offices. So again, twenty-seven thousand square foot building, we have a mini police station. I don't know how it was built this size, it's about seven thousand square feet of living space. You know, so obviously, it's, it's not appropriate for a town our size or, or our department. And it's, uh, you know, obviously, we've got great officers that are working hard. Uh, in there, we've got the Wareham Free Library, which is almost twenty thousand square feet, which is one floor, but. It's not really designed for the way libraries are going or the staffing that we can, we can have right now. We've got the Deacon's Building, or Deacon's School, if you will, former Deacon's School, which is, uh, which is the monstrosity on the list. Roughly not including the, uh, the, the portables, which, you know, we've all talked about getting rid of about seventy thousand square feet. So pretty, pretty massive structure. We've got the Wareham Town Hall at thirty-one thousand square feet, so it's a good sized building, but it's, um. We, it's actually not enough for what we sort of need, but it's, you know, it's the building. We've got the East School, the West School, and, uh, you know, Hammond, so. Been trying, thinking about it all together, so let's lay out, these are sort of our, our main buildings, obviously, we've got, you know, you've got, uh, water pollution control. Municipal maintenance, EMS, yada, 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 but, so it's something we've been talking about. Let's start knocking off how we make all of that work together. So the East School, the West School, including the buildable lot, my West, as you know, my recommendation is. To dispose of those much in the same fashion as we did with the Everett School. Uh, Everett School netted about five hundred thousand. So, it would be my hope to, you know, at least that for those buildings, and, uh. While the interest rates have gone up, there's still a fairly high housing market, if you will, with low inventory, so. And obviously, opportunities. So, you know, so tho- those are sort of the low hanging fruit. The library, you know, it's, um. We talked about in the past, moving the, you know, moving the COA in there, sharing space and such with the, with the roughly twenty thousand square foot building. But, you know, it's, I, it's probably not, that's something that might not work out. So let's, let's just put that, we'll pin that, we'll put that aside for right now. And, uh, let's go with the Deacon's School. You know, uh, it's, well, we've got the COA in the multi-service center. Again, it's, it's a big building, there's plenty of square footage, the real knock is the, is the elevator, right? And it's some of the accessibility, so that's not unheard of in a COA, in fact, some of the new ones have been built with elevators. But that seems to be a real concern, so trying to listen and understanding, maybe there's, there's portion of community that wants the. To, to keep the Deacon's School and such, so, and I think people are, you know, we're all trying to listen, work together, so. Here's my recommendation to sort of redirect energies and, you know, people pulling in the same direction. Here's my recommendation to sort of redirect energies and, you know, people pulling in the same direction. So I propose that southwest section of the building, which I believe is Hall C. You know, let's dedicate that to the COA, I believe that's, uh, you know, that's an entire hall. Um, it also gives access to where the, right by where the, the, the gymnasium, cafeteria and. And some of the other, um, kitchen area is. Now here's where, uh, the real interesting concept. The rest of this building becomes a municipal complex, which is just, which was, as what was voted at town meeting to look into. Municipal operations. We move all town functions in there outside, obviously EMS, water pushing control. And, uh, you know, P D and such like that, it's, uh, and municipal maintenance. You've got the COA wing, then what, which is sort of the social services wing. I can create a land use wing. Which is, creates one-stop shopping instead of people hopping multiple levels. You can, you have the general government and you can do a finance. Now, the other big part about this is you can use one of those areas coming right in to have your setup to be sort of your sticker area. Where it's one shot, stop shopping for stickers from beach dump, even parking. Rather than people being redirected, we can have, you know, you can have the one-stop setup. And you have plenty of room to have meeting rooms. Your selectman's meeting room could actually be right in, uh, in one of those areas. I mean, I've walked the building at least a half dozen times. It's, um, you know, on my, if. On my, my personal level, do I, I love being in the town hall, but I think this is something we have the opportunity and make this change. Make the difference, so it would really be the, the municipal complex there. So, all right, so now we've got two vacant buildings, you've got the multi-service center and the town hall, right? Um, this is really the interesting one, and you'll see where I'm going. The town hall at one point, as you know, has the judge's chambers, used to have cells. That is the size that our police study committee is looking for, for a new police station. Having a police station in front of where the middle school is and to the high school. And closer to our elementary school in this day and age, I think could be a tremendous win, just that presence. You know, we have the opportunity to do, to do that. You know, it's, it takes retrofitting and such, and this is, and folks, I am doing just, this is the concept on it. You know, so now we've set that up. Now we've got the multi-service center, which is, which is, is vacant, let's call it through all these moves. Well, that's, the multi-service center has always been our community center. There's your, your community center, if you, we, if people want to leave, you know, rent out to educational and such. And then those educational, if it's the head starter, if it's whoever, are there by where the other students are and where other, because it's not. Kids aren't always bust, there's parents that need to pick them up. And plus, you have them right by the Wareham Free Library then, which is staying. And again, we have the, the police presence and you have the other students, so. You know, this is what, looking at it from, from a top-down view of trying to, trying to do. This is just the, you know, sort of the, the concept, if you will. And, uh, you know, ask some people, start looking into it, but I'd really like to have the, the feedback of the selectmen. You know, it's obviously retrofitting, doing other things, but, you know, it's, I've had a conversation with the chief. He's, he would be interested in it, so, you know, this is something that I think really need to look forward to. And it uses all our resources in an efficient way.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, you had your, Mr. Slaven? You're muted.
Sorry, I'm using my phone for the, uh.
Yep.
Video, but I'm using my iPad, the big one. Basically, what Mr. Sullivan has just proposed is something that has been discussed over quite a long period of time. Of doing different things. Uh, we've lost the opportunity with the Com electric building where the mall is, to do something like this. Uh, when Walmart decided to move, none of us realized that Walmart actually bought from the Tedeschi's. All thirteen acres of land in East Wareham, which could have also done exactly this type of thing. We don't get these opportunities very often, uh, and what Mr. Sullivan has sat down and proposed. I would like basically for this board, since we've been tasked with making decisions on how these things move forward with town meeting. Et cetera, that we put on our next agenda to seriously discuss, uh, what's been suggested. And basically, if the board is basically in favor, we go ahead and instruct Mr. Sullivan to go ahead and do this. Uh, I don't think we're gonna get another opportunity again like this. It's probably the fiduciary responsibility. It's probably the best possible thing we can do at this time and make it happen. There are some funds coming down available. Uh, just as an example, I believe, uh, on the police, the company goes higher to do the study and stuff, I helped them out. I believe the dollar amount was forty-two million dollars. There's no way we're gonna come up with forty-two million dollars. Like, we can do all these things at once for a very small portion of that. And I would like to seriously go ahead and look at this at the next meeting and make a decision if we want Mr. Sullivan to go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Uh, I, I think this is an amazing idea, honestly, a- a- as you all know, my, my biggest focus. Is, is on the youth and, and keeping them safe at all times. Um, putting a police station right in front of schools, especially with recent events that have happened in the last couple of months. I think this would be phenomenal. Uh, there, there's, there's so much protection right there. Uh, and it, and it would allow, uh, the school resource officer, uh, to spend a lot more time at, uh, mine at school. Uh, protecting that, uh, you'd have the whole force right there. Uh, I love it. I, I think it's an amazing idea. It's, it's perfect in my mind. I, I like it.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz? You're muted. You're muted.
So the first word was wow. You know, it sounds right. I mean, we're not, I haven't looked at the specifics for details. But I think having the police station, um, around where our younger citizens are. I think that's important today. Um, I think having. Things like Project Head Start, uh, available in a, um, multi-service community center. Uh, near the library, near the school's area, I think that's, and, uh, really, really smart. And when you get to Deacon's, part of the reason I was so interested in having COA and elder. Services there is because it's a short van ride or a Uber ride. Or, uh, a bus ride to where they can shop, to where they can get, get medical aid. Um, so that whole service area for them is close to that and it, it just makes. Top line, it makes so much sense. Um, you know, of course, I think. You guys are really good at working the numbers and, and working the realistic plans, of which I'd be happy to be involved in as and if you need me. But my initial reaction is, this is a really good idea.
Thank you. Um, I will say double wow. It checks all the boxes, in my opinion. It gives the council on aging their own wing, one level. I'm presuming that, because I know which one that is, that we could create a parking lot that, 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 that. This just really checks that box in terms of, um, the issues that the council on aging have brought to our attention. The safety of schoolchildren is something unfortunately that we've all become. Really sensitive about, that I, you all have addressed that issue. Um, when you look at the square footage numbers, it's just plain brilliant, in my opinion. So Mr. Slaven has asked that be put on the agenda, it would be the twenty-third, and I would, um, I will do that. Presuming, Mr. Sullivan, that you would be able to do a, a, a more. In-depth kind of presentation or something, would, it, would you be able to present a little bit more detail to us on the twenty-third?
Yeah, you can put some more detail together, and tha- that's one thing, there's so many good people that have done hard work on, on some of these outside things. It's, it's not looking to overshadow that and it's not up, and I, and I appreciate the use of, of perfect, there's. You know, the perfect solution would be if we had unlimited money and we could just do whatever we want. This is what, what I think with our assets and, you know, maybe we can, you know, put a lot of the energy that's going in, continue that. It's, uh, and again, that, it's, there's numbers have been put together on some of these other projects that. You know, we're, we obviously, the retrofit for the police station will need tech on to put that together. You know, I think they started talking, they've obviously looked at the building a, a little bit. Uh, so we'll try and put together everything possible, and I know there'll be more questions that answers in the beginning, but. This is the concept, and I just want to see if this is kind of addressed to the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan, appreciate it. We will, are you done with your reports, sir?
I don't think anyone wants to hear from me after all that talking, so.
Um, okay, we will go on to, um, liaison initiative reports, Mr. Slaven.
Uh, the month of August is like, at the state level, at the federal level, is shutdown month, everybody's on vacation. Uh, the governor's office still has some bills pending, they have either to sign or veto, we'll see what happens. Uh, there's really not much happening, uh, you know, as far as the committees go, we have licensing boards that are still functioning, moving on. But this is really, which is actually for me is a nice time of the year where everything's just kind of quiet, getting ready for the push come. September first, when it's basic language, all hell breaks loose again. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick? Liaison reports, also?
Also.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz?
Um, I have been attending the planning board meetings, so things are going along there as they should go along. Um, this most recent meeting, they're looking at cleaning up some of the wording in our, our zoning area. And the three of the gentlemen, uh, from zoning actually came and they had. A brief conversation about working together on tho- those particular areas, which I thought was very, um. Very positive, especially since I'm supposed to be liaison to both those committees, so it's nice to see them working together. And then, um, the historical society, I really like the way in the summer they put on little. Music shows or entertainment and invite people to go, and I would hope to look at, um. More of that happening from them.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any other announcements, the annual report. From all boards, committees and town departments is underway. Um, and I want to thank all of the, uh, chairs and clerks of all of those boards and certainly of the departments. Uh, for forwarding that information to the Board of Selectmen Office, it's very much appreciated. Um, let's get a motion to please approve the minutes of July twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Ms. Wertz, you were not present, but you can make the motion.
So I make a motion that the minutes for ju- the meeting of July twelve, twenty-twenty-two are accepted.
Is there a motion to second? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Um, yes.
Did you view the? Did you do the video?
I did do part of it, not all of it, so.
But I, I would, you abstain?
Okay, then I'll abstain.
Thank you. Um, if you had watched the whole thing, I would feel a little differently, and I will say, yeah, so it's three zero. One, thank you, and I will accept a motion to approve the executive session minutes.
I make a motion.
To accept and hold would be the motion.
Yeah, that we accept and hold the executive session minutes for July twelfth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve and hold. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz, you were not present.
Stay, yeah.
Thank you, and myself, three zero one, thank you very much. Um, I am now going to ask for a motion to go into executive session for two different reasons. And then we will take a five-minute recess while, uh, W C T V clears the audience and stops the recording. May I have a motion to go into executive session for reasons three and six, Ms. Wertz?
Make a motion that we go into executive sessions for the following reason three and reason six.
There a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, is there any further discussion on the motion to go into executive session at eight fifty-two this evening? Um, Mr. Slaven?
I think we should also let another not coming back from, uh, executive session.
That is correct, we will be dismissing from, we will adjourn from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick? Thank you, Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We're in executive session and we are taking a five-minute recess. Mr. White, would you take care of clearing the audience out? Um, and I will ask you, ladies and gentlemen.
Everybody have a safe week, it's really hot out there, be careful.